Terry. I want to say hello.
Okay, Cooper.
Oh, right on time. Okay, are we ready? How've you been? I haven't seen you. Okay, regular meeting, May twenty-second. That looks right. Let's call the regular meeting of the City Council Tuesday, May twenty-second to order. Rise for the invocation and remain rising for the Pledge of Allegiance.
God, our Divine Spirit, we ask you to send special blessings down this evening for our council meeting, for our council, city workers, our police, our firemen, and all the residents in our city. At this point, I think we all need special blessings. We ask you to bless our country, to bless our planet, and we thank thee for all our blessings. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Hanville, roll, please.
Mayor Dale Masson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Terrence Rowe.
Here.
Councilwoman Jenny Sorrell.
Here.
Councilman William Dittmer.
Here.
Councilman Richard Bloom.
Here.
City Attorney James Matthew.
Here.
City Manager Vincent Lupo.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Motion approved, the minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Okay, I got the general public, I've been already informed. Thomas Brown.
Thomas Brown, seventy-four thirty-six Candlelight Court. I have seen the code enforcement employees driving around in the big black code enforcement truck. It's too bad they do not enforce all code violations. Thank you.
Okay, I have Leonard Lord.
Leonard Lord, I pass her at eight-one-one-four Lee O'Kidd Avenue and good evening, everybody. A couple of dates of interest. We've been hand-in-hand with Corporal Wilkett as he heads up the task force against the, they call them the SOBs, the sex-oriented businesses. And so he had told, asked me to invite leaders of the community and pastors, the twenty-ninth, which will be a week from today, out at Safety Town. At four o'clock, they'll be going, sharing phase two of shutting these shops down in our county. And with, if you study the time that tax money is spent with officers going there, the drugs, the prostitution, all the things. So anyway, if that touches your heart and you're interested, need more information, you can give me a call, but that will be the twenty-ninth, a week from tonight, four o'clock at Safety Town. If you've not been there, you go into Safety Town off of fifty-two, just before you get to the pay road and you have to follow it all the way around and you'll park in the back. It's a little dirt road in the back in the Home Depot parking. So that's the first community thought that we can gather together on. Second is, is by the grace of God, I'll be able to be gone for about five weeks. So I want to make this announcement early. Our backpack giveaway will be July twenty-eighth. That'll be Saturday, three weeks before school starts, and we're looking again to give out four hundred backpacks. And so I do invite the city out, any of you that want to come network. We're looking to have the water slide, the bounce houses, and another barbecue to serve meals. These will be stuffed backpacks. That's the twenty-eighth, we'll be stuffing them the twenty-fifth. And I know the mayor gave us some for backpacks last year, I know Bill Muse helped out. But what happens if you give over a hundred dollars? If you get us your cards for your business, say a business person just wants to be a part of the community and be a part of giving back to school. If you give over a hundred dollars and get us your business cards, we can actually put those in the backpack. So those will be in every home, if that's something that you want to get the word out. But most of all, we just want to have a healthy community, meet the needs, it's no cost to anybody. So those that can help would be great. And if, and we again just want to thank the city for their support, the Police Department, the Fire Department, they've been so gracious to minister to the people. Just a quick testimony last year, yes?
Don't worry, I'll let.
Okay, of course, testimony last year, this family came, this little girl got out and she looked at the fire truck there and she says, "Those are real firemen? I didn't think I'd ever get to read, meet a real fireman in all my life." So I walked across the street and I took around the engine. And of course, my grandson's got pictures in it, but it's just great to see the community come together to just give and meet needs. So if you just think and want to be a part of it in any way, that will be the twenty-eighth, okay?
Okay.
All right, thank you all. So that's next Tuesday for the sex shops and then the twenty-eighth of July. So Lord bless you and thank you for your time there.
Sex shops. Okay, we have Sandy Spaldy.
Sandra Spaldy, eighty-six twelve Green Street. I want to share some things with our council. I am truly disappointed in each and every one of you. We are a city which is self-governed. You got that? Yet the council did not accept our code enforcers' work on our codes, which they were good. We paid them a salary to work on them, then tossed them aside and accept the county codes, which is not any better than their codes were. If you wanted the county code, why waste money having our code department do the work? Why waste city money? Are we going to govern ourselves or accept all the county's codes? And whatever else the county wants to give us that we want to accept? Do we run our own city or just accept? Are you going to ignore our city workers' efforts and diligence in completing their tasks professionally? Or do you want us to remain self-governed or not? You guys have taken the first step of giving up our self-government. Think about things. You complain about waste of money. You sit there and complain, yet you wasted the money paying salaries for these people to do that work. I read those codes, can't say I agreed with them all, but they were good and they were hard work. To just throw them aside and accept the county's, I think that was a big shame. And shame on all of you, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill, I think you're probably going to talk on the same orders, so you might as well.
Actually, I wasn't going to speak to that.
Oh, okay.
I had a couple of comments, so I'm general.
You want?
Yeah, sure.
Bill Glavos, seventy-eight ten Chesapeake Street, right here in Port Ritchie, Florida. Mayor, council, staff, good to see you all. I have two suggestions. One is considering the import on that particular item, the changes to the code. I would suggest to switch an agenda item on three and five and move that one up. I've always been a fan of putting the most important stuff first, and that's the one that people are interested in. The other ones, the playground equipment, I think could be kicked to the back, a suggestion. The other is on the subject of grants. I know it's not before council tonight, but I watch your discussion on it last meeting. I would suggest first increasing the amount. There's three hundred and twenty thousand dollars by my counting in the CRA discretionary spending right now. So I think that the fifty thousand is a little low, I think you guys could bump that up. There was also talks about limiting it to income limiting and such. Port Rich, New Port Ritchie does something, and I think we could probably do that. And that is limited to R-one and R-two homesteaded properties. Most, if you look, if you go and look on like the property pariser site, you'll find the wholesale side, a lot of the north side, virtually everybody is zoned R-two. And I know R-two allow duplexes, but the way you keep away from the commercial properties is it's R-one, R-two homesteaded. If it's homesteaded, it's got to be owner-occupied, okay? So, R-one, R-two homesteaded, yeah, that's pretty much it.
All right, thank you, Bill.
I'll speak on the other agenda, I don't want to get in. Thank you.
Okay, I have Pete Barnett. Drumroll.
Pete Barnett, eighty-four twenty-eight Green Street. I'd like to talk about the, I want to congratulate Mr. Bloom for winning the election. Terry, it's good to see you back. We spent three years getting a council that is pro-reputation of this city, trying to get it cleaned up. I think it's time that the city vote to change the charter. Councilwoman Sorrell has brought it up three, four times, got kicked down, we'll talk about it later, all that crap. This is not a one-man city. It's time for the council to rule the city. It's time for the citizens to have a choice in what they want, okay? I think that's something we need to do. I'd like to see a motion from the council to get it started, get a committee together, change the charter. It's not one person that lives here, it's a whole bunch of people that live here. And actually, the one man who has the rule doesn't live here. It bothers me. The other thing I want to talk about is CRA money. I'm tired of seeing the CRA money paid for anything except community development. I was at the district meeting where they said it's going away because of abuse. That was their number-one concern, they all owned up to it, New Port Ritchie, the county, everybody owned up to it. They're abusing it because they don't use it correctly. It's going away, we don't know if it'll be tomorrow, three years down the road, whatever. It's time to stop. We have till October for a new budget. I would like the city council to tell the guy in charge to cut the CRA money from the budget. Pretty simple. You know why we can't dredge? Because we don't have money. You know why we don't have money? Because our salaries are paid by CRA money. It'd be a lot nicer to have five months for your department managers to go, "Look, we're not going to have this money. We got to cut, we got to tighten, if somebody's got to go, they got to go." Instead of all of a sudden the county going, "We don't have no more money." So now you go in and say, "You, you, 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 you all got to go." It's rude, it's dumb, it's ridiculous. If this council has the opportunity, which they have, to tell the city manager, "No more CRA money. Not three percent, not four percent, a hundred percent, cut the budget." Everybody out there that watches this video, they complain, "You're spending too much money." They ought to write in to you people and tell you, "Stop it." It's done, the CRA money's going to go away. If we don't save what we have now, we'll never have any. So let's cut the budget. Pretty simple, you got till October. I think you can mandate as a council to cut the budget. I'd like to see you all step up and do it. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all we have. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor and Council, if I might. I'd like to make a simple announcement that our Fire Department is now Narcan competent and Narcan is now available on all of our rescue fire department. Also that the Fire Department will be establishing specific areas to begin the installation of the fire detectors in the individual houses. We'll be making an announcement very shortly and specifically what area that is, and they will be installing free of charge fire detectors. Most recently, there was a shooting in our community and arrests have been made with respect to those shootings, and I'll defer to Chief DeCanyo to speak on that issue.
Thank you. Yes, it was a drive-by shooting. Luckily, the only thing that was hit was a vehicle on a building, but two rounds did pierce the window and the door and if somebody was hit behind there, they certainly could have been killed. Officer Howard led the investigation along with the Pasco warrants and their gang unit. And so far, we have two under arrest, the main shooter and one of his accomplices. It's still under investigation and we expect more arrests coming down.
Who were the, where was this?
It was on Sun Glow, it was one of the duplexes on Sun Glow.
Okay.
It is some gang activity, they're moving into the city and we've established with the county that we're going to, if they're going to move into the city, we're going to change their address to Land O' Lakes Jail.
Okay. I guess we can't talk too much about this.
Chief, you may want to speak about the acquisition of two vehicles.
We've been signed up with the ten thirty-three program. It's a federal program for surplus military equipment. And with the, with Brooksville PD being disbanded, their two Humvees went up for transfer. We don't own them, we transfer them. We were able to get ninety thousand dollars vehicles for five hundred dollars apiece. So they're going to be used for high-water rescue. They can, you can drive, these vehicles are set up, we can drive them up over the dashboard so that anybody that's inside of it could, you could be chest-deep in water and the vehicle will still run. So we've acquired them, a little bit of cleaning up and they'll be, they're ready. I mean, if we needed them tonight, we could certainly put them out on the road. So we'll share them with Fire, if Fire needs a vehicle for rescue, but we have them available now. We won't be taking our patrol cars into that brackish, you know, saltwater, we'll be taking the Humvees in there.
I'd like to say that the city moved extremely quickly. Chief DeCanyo went out and took a hard look at the program. We discussed it earlier, it became available. We moved quickly and we were the first in line and we received the only two vehicles out there. There were seven or eight people immediately behind us. We essentially have acquired approximately a hundred and eighty thousand dollars worth of vehicles for a cost of about a thousand dollars. They are specially designed, as the chief spoke, for high-water utilization, extended exhaust system, extended intake systems. And they'll be ideal, ideally used in an event of severe flooding and evacuation. They'll also be used as parallel, as the chief stated, as part of an augmented fire system that we're beginning to implement. And there are some other discussions we'll talk later about some additional equipment that'll be going to our Fire Department to further our fire resources. Thank you, Chief. Earlier, council gave us the additional framework for a grant program that was recently alluded to. We are still working on the ground rules with respect to that grant program. We'll come to council one more time later on, but that program we should have implemented or should be available sometime in July. Ms. Martinez will speak to the Fourth of July, Perinn Seventh of July festivities that the city will host.
Yes, we're underway with our Seventh of July fireworks display. We are currently accepting vendor applications for food vendors. We actually have one already signed up, but we're looking for more vendors for this event and we're in the midst of planning it right now.
And we still have no mechanism of the firemen and the chief flipping burgers and taking all the money?
We'd have to talk to the fire chief about that and see how he feels. I know they've done it in that the volunteer firefighters have had a booth in the past. So we can always check with them and see if they have an interest in that.
If they have an interest, okay. Any more?
Yes, sir. On June twenty-sixth, at your council meeting, our auditors will present the comprehensive annual financial report. We expect that audit to clearly and concisely outline to the city and its residents our current fiscal condition, which is constantly improving month by month. And to that end, we have a water production and our records clearly indicate that as of April, we have purchased six thousand nine hundred and eighty-four dollars and sixty cents worth of water from our source in Port Ritchie, Newport Ritchie. We budgeted a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we've only spent five percent of that budget. Previous years indicate a constant improvement and we have the charts and scales to prove that. We continue to make improvements on our water acquisition and distribution system and I'm very proud of our utility department and the work that you're doing to continue not only the acquisition, but also the distribution of that water and the water quality. And with that, as promised to council, each department will make a presentation and I would ask Mr. Chris Hughes of our Public Works and Utilities Department to make his presentation to council on the status of his department.
Good evening. My report is for thirty, for the last thirty days for our Utility and Public Works Department. I'll start with Utility Department. They completed two hundred and seventeen work orders, including routine maintenance on our water and sewer distribution system, which includes fifty-four lift stations. They average thirty, around thirty pumps a month that they have to pull and do maintenance on. Next is Public Works. In the last thirty days, they revitalized the parks areas and other areas in the city with new mulch and rock. They repainted all the front offices and corridors of City Hall. They restripped all lines and speed bumps with reflective paint on the south side. They've repaired several potholes throughout the city and continue to do so. They replaced some thermoplasts to the stop bars of River Gulf and River Grand Boulevard. On Olzner, they have cleared five hundred feet of sediment from the swales. On Limit, they've cleaned, cleared seven hundred feet of sediment. Over fifty trash bags have been collected on those roads as well and they need to continue that work and finish that area. They repaired the drain box in Marina Palms. Of course, they do the monthly brush pickup at the beginning of every month, the first week of every month. Set up for the new Public Works facility, which is here and I'm glad to announce within two weeks we'll be in and fully using the facility. Of course, it's mowing season throughout the city and they also trash out the city weekly. I hope all of you have noticed that all the mangroves at the parks have been trimmed and look quite well. After we're finished with Olzner and Limit, we will mobilize to Miles on the east side and go out to nineteen and clear those swales as well.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
That's it. Okay, well, I have a couple of questions. These fire detectors.
Yes, sir.
They're the ones that don't go off unless you shoot them.
They are the ones that are provided, they are free, they will be installed by our people so that they will be functioning. Bill, do you want to speak to that issue?
Do that, and they only go off at three a.m.?
Yeah, they're smoke detectors, they're not fire detectors.
Fire and smoke detector, essentially, really. I could say fire detector, it's a smoke detector.
They go off when there's smoke. That's right, or the battery goes bad, that's correct.
When the batteries go bad, they go off?
They do, yes. Mine do, yes.
Can you, can you make them go off in a day?
Yeah, all right.
Okay, go on, all right. The other thing, and then I'll get to you, council people. I have to agree with Mr. Pete. We have to get off the CRA and I assume we'll do that during this budget cycle.
Indeed, I had a staff meeting this morning and one of the issues that we discussed was the CRA and the budget, we are in the beginning of putting the budget process together. I have stated to this council and publicly my continued desire to restructure CRA so that we are no longer dependent upon CRA. I can categorically state that former administrations utilized CRA funds as that council saw fit. And the CRA funds are what they are. And there is a distinct possibility that they will not be available in the future. We are trying to husband the CRA funds as best we possibly can. We're looking to reduce positions here in the city. We'll be addressing many of those issues in the upcoming budget process. We'll be coming to this council with those individual budgets for council's review and input. CRA funds are specifically earmarked for very special purposes and it's been my intent to utilize them for those purposes as directed by the law and as my council dictates.
Okay, I've got just a couple more knowledge you guys lose. Out at Sailwinds, and Bill, there's a house that burned up. What is our plans with that? I got a letter from a gentleman that lives out there, but he didn't give me a way to respond. So I hope you're listening.
A house that burned?
A house that burned down at Sailwinds, Duplex Place.
I think that's one, I think that's one that was never built, never completely finished. There was one fire there, but it has been rebuilt and I think it's reoccupied now. We gave it a final C.O. a few weeks ago, but I think the other, the house you're talking about is the one near the lift station.
Right, I think that's it.
Too close to the lift station to be built, that's why it was never completed originally.
Oh, it shouldn't be there anymore?
No. It's never been built. I'm sorry.
What are we going to do about that?
This is the property vital lift station?
Yes, yes, it is.
This is a legal issue that will eventually be resolved. It sits on a lift station, it is not going to be moved, further constructed until it is properly constructed, it practically sits on top of that lift station. It is an issue of the owner and that owner came to us some time ago. We sat down, we had a very long discussion with him and outlined essentially what he has to do. He has not decided to do anything about it. It's never burnt down, he doesn't have it.
How long does he have to do that, to respond?
Again, this is an issue that he has and he built the property some time ago. He built on the property with whatever permission he had at the time. And we, and in furtherance of that, it's not going to be built, he won't get a permit.
He won't finish.
No, will not finish.
Okay, hear that? And lastly, how are we doing the fireworks? Have we come up with a better or a better plan? Are we, I think we said last year we're going to have more fireworks, a better display? Have we said anything, Chad?
We have a contract in place with the same company that performed the fireworks display last year, Orlando Special Effects, I think is the name. And they've, they're going to have a show that's enhanced from what we had last year.
And it'll be in the bayou?
It'll be the same setup as we had last year.
There's your answer, Chad. Okay, any other council members like to speak?
I would.
Please.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I think everybody here is aware of Mr. Brown's controversy. He's been up in front of this council numerous, numerous times. And I feel that he needs closure. I feel that the resident at seven four four seven Candlelight Court needs closure. I feel that the residents in Candlelight Court need closure on this fence issue. I campaigned over there and I have heard it loud and clear that they are a little bit disturbed and dismayed by the fence that was constructed. As a result, I'm going to ask the city to produce a number of documents to the council. I'm going to read them so you'll have them in the record. I want the city to produce any and all documents pertaining to the construction of the fence that was placed by the resident, I believe it was Ms. Sullivan, at seven four four seven Candlelight Court. And specifically, these are the documents. One, any and all city ordinances pertaining to the construction of the fence, of fences in general. Any and all documents pertaining to the specifications of the fence that was constructed at seven four four seven Candlelight Court. Any and all permits that were obtained by the resident of seven four four seven Candlelight Court prior to the construction of the fence and any and all permits that were obtained by the resident of seven four four seven Candlelight Court subsequent to the construction of the fence. Five, any and all documents that the fence constructed at seven four four seven Candlelight Court met all city ordinances pertaining to the Court met all city ordinances pertaining to the construction of fences. Six is any and all documents that the fence constructed at seven four four seven Candlelight Court did not meet all city ordinances pertaining to the construction of the fence. Seven, any and all variances pertaining to the construction of the fence at seven four four seven Candlelight Court. Eight, any and all documentation supporting the city's approval of the fence constructed at seven four four seven Candlelight Court. Nine, any and all documentation of the existence of easements surrounding Lake Cox. And finally, ten, any and all documentation of ownership of any ease, of those easements surrounding Lake Cox. I believe that with that documentation, this council can, for once and for all, look at the documentation, look at the data, and give this man over here and to the residents over there in Candlelight Court closure.
I applaud that.
I'd like to make a motion to put that on the next agenda, Mr. Brown's concerns.
Second.
Have a second? Okay. Have a motion in a second. This for the agenda, did you get that written? All in favor?
Aye.
Good job. Okay.
May I ask for a point clarification, sir?
Yes, please.
It is this council's direction that we have all of that information here for the next council meeting. Is that my understanding?
Yes.
I am not so sure that that is even physically possible. If you're asking for surveys that...
No, I didn't answer.
I don't think he meant so. Permits.
Permits, ownership of easements, I mean, it's...
To the extent that we're poss, that's possible, we will indeed pull all of that information and have it present at this council. If there is any information that we cannot obtain, you'll know exactly what that information is, and we'll also present that to you.
Okay.
I've got a question. The smoke detectors we're talking about, they're free? Where are they coming from?
A grant, a grant program? Grant program through the Red Cross.
Okay, so that'll cost the city anything but the installation time or...
Costs nothing. By volunteer staff, yes, sir.
Okay. And they're available to everyone?
They're available to, to residents in the area.
It'll be residential, no commercial, and there is no limit. So if you need two, three, whatever you need in the house, the volunteer firefighters at Port Ritchie are gonna assist in the installation. It's an American Red Cross grant, so it's, there's no cost to us at all.
Okay. So if everybody in the city decided to upgrade their fire, their smoke detectors, you're gonna be very busy.
We are.
They come, they come in batches of fifty. We'll do one section at a time for as, as long as it takes us and as long as they're available.
And they're the newer ones with the ten-year batteries, so they're not gonna cause any issues. They won't go off at three AM in your house.
Are these hardwired?
No, 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 the battery.
They're battery operated.
Ten-year life on the battery.
Mayor, I have one more comment, if I may.
Go ahead.
And this basically has to do with the dredging issue here in town. And prior to getting involved in, in the city council, I had some pretty extensive talks with our mayor about dredging. And I, I remember one of our conversations was that he had somebody or some company, I don't recall exactly, that was available to dredge the canals and do it to where it could be financed over an extended period of time. And I said, "Well, that sounds like a, a great deal," you know, because if you can finance things, it's, it's less cumbersome on, on, on the budget. And his response to me was that he was told that this could not be done, it wasn't legal. So I, I, I guess, Jim, I'm gonna address this question to you. I went through the charter and the, and the codes, and specifically in, under, you know, finances and some other sections. And I did not see, unless this, there's a statute or administrative law order or court, appellate court decision, I could not find anywhere where that was not acceptable. And, and perhaps you could help us out on that.
The, there are state laws regarding bidding, okay? Ours parallels that and has a lower threshold. We just have to go out to bid. If you can think of some way to go out to bid that says, "We want this project done, but we pay you later," we can go out to bid on that.
Well, exactly. So, so the caveat is the bid goes out that we can, we would like you to dredge our, whatever canals need to be dredged. And as part of that dredging, the caveat is we wanna finance it over ten, twelve, fifteen, or how many years? And then put that out to bid and see who bids on it.
You could do that. I'd probably recommend that you'd go out to bid for financing separately distinct from the actual dredging. Do you understand what I mean? Because you may limit the amount of, not many people in the dredging business are in the finance bid.
But would it be illegal?
Illegal? As long as it goes out to bid, you know, it's not illegal, but you have to be able to prepare a bid. Do you understand what I mean? You're looking for two different, you're going out to bid on two different things at once.
Well, I, I, I think, you know, and I, I would have to...
Do you understand where I'm going? It's kinda like going out to bid for a car, and you're saying, "But we wanna finance it," so now you gotta match, you know, one car is eighty thousand, and they say, "We can build a car for seventy-nine, but you'll pay us later at a certain percentage. What's the better deal?"
The only other thing is, if, if there are companies out there that will dredge and finance, then that's perfectly acceptable.
If you go out to bid and you could find enough bidders for that, sure.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to get that...
I'm not sure we're gonna find many dredging companies that are financing companies.
But, but is, is there a, a number of bids that, that you have to have?
No.
I mean, if, if you only get one bid, they get the job, don't they, if you like it?
No, as long as we like the bid.
As long as the bid is fair and open.
Yeah.
No, but I'm saying, if he bids...
If only one person wants to bid on it, then, then that's it. If you like it, you accept it, correct?
Yeah, well, it has to be reasonable and best bid, I think, is the standard. I have that right? Or we forget that term. You know, Bill Smith, that's never financed anything over fifty dollars or something, probably isn't gonna fit...
Well, I...
Well, I'm very serious about that.
No, no, no.
And I heard the offer before from others in the neighborhood, and that's where it was coming from. You know, if they're backed by PNC Bank, perhaps.
But as long as they...
Does that make sense?
As long as they're bonded.
Bonded? Be a little more than bonding, they better have the money. They're paying for it now, we're paying them later. They're gonna bond to do the work, and then they're, we're gonna pay them later.
Sure.
I'm for it.
Okay.
We gotta get moving. Thank you.
Does that make sense?
Perfect.
And if it's a high bid, we think we don't have to take it, right?
You have to take the lowest and best bid.
Well, if there's one and it's high, we don't want it, we can just say no.
You can't go, when you say high, if you have nothing to compare it against, no, you don't have to take the bid if they're the only one, okay? A little hard to figure out what high is.
I can give you that answer.
Yes, if someone wants to charge you fifty percent interest, you don't have to take it.
Right, okay. Thank you. Anyone else from council?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. This is probably for, for Vince.
Yes, sir.
Going back to the fence issue with Mr. Brown, I keep hearing the word, you know, public easement and city easement used, like they're, they're sane. And from what I, what I can find out, they're, they're two totally different things. Can you set up for, what type of easement do we have on that fence line?
The, I pulled some of the documents that you were calling for, just in curiosity of, since the last meeting. To get the easements, okay? We, we have easements here in the city, but whenever we do anything, we have, what do we think you have, Chris? Five hundred easements in the city, maybe a thousand? Okay, so we don't have them all here. So to get easements, generally when we have a purpose, I'll pull title reports seeking easements, so we'll be doing that. It'll probably take four or five weeks, but they should have the other documents much sooner. The only easement I could find in the city, and let me explain this, which may answer your question, okay? The easement I found, I'm not sure where it came from. I have here, it's an easement deed. Just wanna find one of the things here. It's, do you have those maps?
Yes, right here, sir.
Could you hand them out? This'll answer a lot of questions, not to be, made a little easier. Because it's a very important question, maybe why do you share? You look at the map, pretty much in the middle, you see the little, the house there with a seven, with a seven four four seven on it. Do you see that? Everybody see that?
Yes, sir.
This is off the appraiser's site. That doesn't mean that the lines are correct, that you rely upon it. I'd have to do a survey, but everything I've seen so far, I think this is pretty, pretty accurate. Below that, you see building seven four six oh? See below it, to the south? I guess that's technically, that would be to the south, right? Okay? Now, the only easement deed I saw in the city that we had was an easement on seven four six oh, okay? Now, what an easement is, it's the right of someone, if you own property, so the property owner at seven four six oh, someone has an easement across their property. That means that they have a right to use a portion of the property pursuant to the terms of the easement. This easement deed here, tell you, and they're limited. This one happens to be, the grantee desires, that's the city of Port Ritchie, to obtain from grantor, that's the owner of seven four six oh. And grantor desires to convey, convey to grantee, that means just give them an easement, an easement for the purpose of installing and maintaining electrical service for a water pump in Lake Cox, running along the north side of grantor's parcel, a real property described in Exhibit A. Now, whenever we do these, I, I think I might have done this one, I don't know. This is two thousand and six, okay? I might have done this, I remember when it was around. Attached to it is always a picture, okay? Not always, but ninety-nine percent of the time. And the reason there's a picture with an easement is so you don't have to get out the legal description that's in here, you know, twenty-five feet, two, ten feet, et cetera, so you know where it is generally. So this is an easement solely for, the city has an easement across that gentleman's property to install electric service and maintain it. So that's an easement for a specific purpose. It's not a public easement, okay? I don't know of any public easements around Lake Cox, but there could be, but we'll search it out. That means that city workers can go there to install the electrical service once and maintain it. Any city worker or anybody else that walks onto that property to do anything that doesn't, you know, to accept, maintain electric services, a trespasser. That's the only easement I could locate in the city. So an easement is limited to who it's given to and for what purpose. That's a specific easement. A general easement, I'm not sure what that means, but if it was, there could be easements which are just access across property, but it would depend on whose favor it is. Okay, it's not to the general public.
That's exactly what my question is.
Yeah, I, a long way to answer your question, but it's not a general easement. It may have that purpose or something, or if the city said, "Look, you know, I had a park over here, and I'd like to be able to have my people in the city walk across," but if you get an easement, you wanna call that a general easement, but I haven't seen anything like that. Leaving aside that, just so we know where we're going with this, the square to the right that looks like a lake, that's a man-made lake. We have documentation over there, that will show you that. It was an issue for a while. That's city property. Now, if you look at that, and you see the seven four four seven, see the number?
Yep.
To the right of it is the only landmass on the city property. It's only accessible by water, okay? Chief, do you want anybody going there? Neither does any other city department. The only way you can get there is swim. To the right here, it's private property held by a county landowner, I believe it's a few doctors in the pension fund. Way up here is the Gill's property, the city property, and across the top here, which is Broadway Avenue, that is owned by Tascow Public Utilities, okay? So to get here, onto this property, you'd have to trespass somebody's property to get onto Lake Cox. Unless there's some easement, I don't know about. That's the bottom line of it.
Right. So this fence is supposedly built in the easement?
My, my guess, and I think, Councilman Rowe, you pointed this out last time, I think, there's a fence that looks like it was permitted on city property from the little bit of investigation I've done, that's probably correct. I probably wouldn't have allowed it to be permitted there, but if it was knocked down, speaking with staff, they'll build one. We don't wanna be going there. So I think that's as much research we've done so far.
So there is no public easement?
Not that I could find. Now, if there is one, I'm gonna pull title searches, they generally take four or five weeks.
Right, so this...
I'll pull them on every property, all the way around.
Okay, to determine that this property is not some public easement for people who...
Well, the property is city property. I don't know of any public easements to get to it, but I guess my point is, even if there was an easement across somebody's property to get to that water, we don't wanna be there anyway. Go put a fence up.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
That's from my, and that's not my decision, that's a decision with the entire staff.
Any other comments on this?
Just that, I know Mr. Brown would wanna get into this, but I myself, years ago, when this first came up, went to the county and went through the plats. And I did see, as I remember, a perpetual easement on a drawing at the county. Now, I'll be happy to go look for that again. No, it was, it was different. It showed a perpetual easement all around the lake. Now, when I saw that, I realized that that argument was true, according to that plat, so...
Well, like I said, we're gonna pull, pull them all, but I haven't seen that in city records. I was gonna say, now, this, this is showing Lake Cox in this exact configuration as being owned by the city. There's an easement against our property, we'll be pulling the records off that. Okay, so I don't know that answer, so I'm gonna pull them all, unless, this'll loop the council, otherwise...
Excuse me, Jim, one.
Sure.
One question about this. So this piece of fence that transects the yellow line, which is the seven four four seven...
Right.
...property line?
Right.
Okay. So, so that piece of fence that extends beyond that?
Right.
Okay. Is, is, that's on, that's not on that residence property?
It's most, that's most likely, presuming that this picture is accurate, because they're not taking every day, and I think it is from, Chris, that's pretty accurate probably, right? It's not on, it's on city property, yeah.
So, so it's not, it's not on the residence property?
No.
So basically, what you're, is what we have here is the resident has constructed a fence on city property.
That's correct, and it looks like, my guess is it's been permitted.
Okay, and...
Yeah, I think that was Mr. Rowe's comment last night.
Okay, and, and, and in doing so, it has, has blocked the egress and ingress off of, onto and into city property.
And if, in reality, it does that? We don't want anybody there anyway, but go ahead.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but in, in reality, that's what happened. And I would guess, and I'd be speculating, but at the time it was put out that far, people were trespassing over their property. You gotta remember, even if there is some sort of easement all around the edge, still gotta get to it. Well, I haven't figured out how they can get to the edge of Lake Cox yet.
Isn't it common, if you wanna, if you wanna keep people out of your property, is to put a fence along the back of your property on your property line?
You, you could, you could have, you could have done that. She could have, sure.
I mean...
I, I think it's a practical matter.
If everybody's blocking their, their, their pathways onto the city property, you know, it's one way to do it, but I, I think what you'd common, more commonly see is a fence that goes along the back of your property, on your property, and not onto somebody else's or the city's.
Well, I, if you wanted me to speculate, I could speculate that it's a lot easier just to put... Well, I, if you wanted me to speculate, I could speculate that it's a lot easier just to put three feet of fencing there, bring it all the way down than put a fifty-
Certainly more economical.
Sure. Cheaper, that would be my guess, it'd be cheaper.
And technically, who would want to go back behind this lady's house on what, five, three, five feet?
Yeah.
There is no easement from what we're seeing right now, anyway.
Well, I-
As of right now.
But we're gonna, I'm gonna pull the searches on all these properties to see if what Mr. Rowe said, there's an easement all the way around it, but presuming they're not, that city property wouldn't make any difference anyway.
Right, so if it's a city, if it's a city's easement, it doesn't mean it's publicly accessible. People can't just use city easements for their own use, correct?
E, even if it was a city easement, we'd still control the easement.
Right.
I, I'm not sure, you know, I couldn't imagine a city easement going, for what purpose? Generally, the city gets easements for purposes-
Right.
-to get act, you know, to lay pipes and things like that. I've never seen anything like that. See, normally on the original plat plan, what happens is they lay out, this, this was kind of different. It was seventy-nine, this was annexed, and on the original plat plan, they'll lay out the streets, then they'll be dedicated, there was no common element here, okay? So, I presume that the city just ended up with Lake Cox. But there was no common element, without any common element, generally, there's very few easements outside of utilities.
So, technically, if you find nothing but what we think is true here, the city could just put no trespassing, ten feet of fence, and-
Well, probably, you could take about two feet of fence from the corner where it crosses the yellow line and bring it this way, you'd have no way to get there.
Right, it'd be done.
You're done, sure.
That's it, that's the remedial measure.
Yes, it is, yes. That's right.
That's exactly the point.
So, all of that's done. We're good?
We're good.
Any more?
Nope.
Well, I'm gonna get this, things that Dr. Bloom asked for, at least I'll get some of them for. I like to know for sure, you know, I mean, that, but it really wouldn't make any difference as a practical matter here, just bringing it down this way, but there's, there's, there is other issues about earlier fences, I don't want to get into it. There's other things that have been written before, but I might not have, I guess, to answer Mr. Rowe's, you know, I might not have permitted something on city property, if in fact that's the case. Now, I'm not relying on this picture. Like, no reason to do that, I don't think it's proper procedure, you understand what I mean? Like, you want to bring your fence out, you're gonna have to stop your fence there, if the city wants to. I mean, you gotta remember, the city could put it on the yellow line, too, you know what I mean? It'd stop anybody from going there, we could've done that. But I guess it was just easier, I guess the city, I'm just guessing, the city didn't want anybody going back there. She said, "Look, I'm putting my fence in, I'll go all the way over and do it for you." Fine, they permitted, but I don't think they gave proper answers, is probably what went on there, Mr. Rowe.
Then maybe this documentation will, will reveal exactly what, what-
Uh, I've, I've seen the permits, I don't think you're gonna find documents as to why yes, why no, I've seen the files, but we'll pull them all, I can take a look at them, but, you know, the permit's just a permit, you know, they're just, this was a standard permit. The ordinances are easy, you know, the city ordinances are, you know, pretty simple, but I don't think you're really revealing. I think the, the most important thing will be to pull title searches, they're a few hundred bucks apiece. I'm gonna do one on Lake Cox, I'll probably do one on the county easement, and a couple of these properties going back till seventy-five, since this didn't even exist before then, was transferred by the Corn Blooms, and if they don't come up, we'll, we'll know the answer to that question.
We proceed from there.
Yeah, but the interim, pull out more documents. Didn't mean to make that so lessy, but we had spent a little time looking at this the last week.
Last chapter of the Tempest and the Teapot.
We have had committees and boards for a long time, according to Charter, and I think that it'd be really good if we could bring that back up and review it with our, with our people, so that they can come in and, and participate with some of it, and maybe take a load off of our staff. I mean, we have a Citizens Advisory Committee that could probably very well handle many of the things that, that Jocelyn is so good at doing, and I like the Fourth of July thing, and maybe their Christmas things, just take something off your desk for a while. But I'd like to put on the agenda the next time that we go through our committees and that we see if we can get committees going that we might need. Maybe we do need a committee to look at the Charter, and I think that would be an excellent idea. So, I'd like to make a motion to put committees on the agenda.
Second?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are down to, I need a motion for the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, would you like to vote, Ms. Rowe?
And Mr. Mayor, a request that we move item five forward.
Item five. I'm gonna ask you guys to bear with me, I've asked some people here for the smart meter presentation, and I'd like to get that, I don't want to keep them all night, and we just, we've set the all-time record for the first of-
Are they here for the smart meter?
They are here for that, I don't know that we want to go, we, the way we're being verbose tonight, I think maybe we should just move them up and let them have a nice evening. Does anybody have a problem with that? Okay. Paul St. John is a, not well-known, internationally known neurophysiologist, anyway. I've asked him to speak to this, and ladies and gentlemen, this is not a small deal. This is, this is a worldwide sort of problem we're having. I measured our police department, and we have them on broil with meters back there and whatever else. I think we can, Paul, would you come forward and we'll try to make this brief and hopefully start a leading path, go instead of following it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Councilmember. I'm the founder and director of the St. John Clark Pain Treatment Center in Fairwater, Florida. I've given you copies, all council members, of this book, because if you are not familiar with the health issues, and not many people are, I went to the recent council meetings in Tampa and St. Petersburg, and there was not anybody who presented the health concerns there. Mostly, the representation was from Mobile ID, a group of Wall Street interests trying to promote the G5 network, and there was no, absolutely no understanding of the dangers presented by electromagnetic frequencies. So, this is the third edition, this book, by two researchers that I've presented to you, and I've presented to you some DVDs, two I want to bring to your attention. One by a neuroscientist who is part of handing out the Nobel Prize in Neuroscience from the Karolinska Institute, his name is Dr. Otto Johansson. So, you have one of these, I've given it to the mayor, and the other is the research work of Dr. Mark Blank at Columbia University. The industry would have you believe that there is no research behind the dangers of electromagnetic fields. So, the first thing you really need to understand is the difference between ionizing radiation and non-ionizing radiation. But to date, there are over twenty-five thousand research papers on the dangers of non-ionizing radiation. So, I just want to clarify for you the difference, and just give you a brief history of the awareness of this, and, and the awareness of a condition called electro-hypersensitivity, which was actually coined in the United States in nineteen ninety-seven after a research paper and a study done by Dr. Ed Leeper and Dr. Nancy Wertzheimer in childhood leukemia, and they found that children who lived in a close proximity to high-tension power lines were more than double the incidence of childhood leukemia than children that did not live in that environment. Next was the work, a book by Mr. Samuel Milham, entitled Dirty Electricity, which raised the awareness even further of the effects of non-ionizing radiation. So, just to clarify for you the difference, that ionizing radiation is enough energy where it can rearrange molecules, like, for example, water exposed in your body to ionizing radiation. This is enough energy to, for example, knock out one of the hydrogen bonds in water so that you're left with a hydroxyl, an OH molecule, which is carcinogenic. This came to light here in Florida, and I was one of the people who brought this to attention fifteen years ago when a corporation, a vindicator corporation, wanted to irradiate the orange crops, and the whole issue of food irradiation, and said that it was non-toxic. We presented a researcher from MIT to the city council in Gainesville showing that there was, the exposure of the citrus fruit that was proposed was a hundred thousand times greater than necessary to keep a molecule of either electron or proton in its orbit. That eventually, after the science was understood, was stopped in the state of Florida, the whole issue of food irradiation. So, here we are, fifteen years later, being exposed to non-ionizing radiation, but what you should know about that is there have been literally hundreds of researchers showing that it has the ability to break DNA snips. And why is that important? If you look at areas like the macular in your eyes, they regrow every forty-eight hours. Now, what allows them to grow is the genetic code in our DNA. Breakage in that code dramatically prevents those tissues from repairing themselves. This goes on all over the body. And this is a prelude to the new G5 network. So, I want you to understand, I'm just gonna give you basically an understanding of the G4 network that we have now, that we're using, and this represents, in gigahertz, two-point-four million waves per second. The new proposed G5 network will be up to nine million waves per second, because this is not as penetrating as the current G4 network. The proposals coming from the FCC in Washington is that you will have one of these towers every fifty yards, that will be put on lampposts. This is going full bore unless people realize what amount of radiation that you were going to be exposed to. I want to also point out, this magnitude of increase and the blanketing of an electromagnetic field everywhere also violates the Fourth Amendment, because you have a right to privacy in your person. Now, this is something that the industry in other countries ignores because other countries don't have Fourth Amendment rights. But in this country, we have the Fourth Amendment. All of us are being exposed to a certain amount of radiation every day. I want to just bring your attention to, and, and should you choose to invite me back, I want to present to you this research paper. In this book, there are three-hundred-and-forty-four peer-reviewed research papers. I found one very compelling. It is, the name of it is "Nerve Cell Damage in Mamalian Brains Due to Microwaves." Now, since I had a mamalian brain, I was interested in that. When I read it, it was shocking. The foundation that put this together was the foundation for the Biomagnetic Institute towards a new rationale for risk assessment and management of bioelectrical frequencies. This, I think you should all read, because it raises very serious questions about what happens to, for example, not only our DNA, but the blood-brain barrier, and the cells that have taken nature many, many hundreds of thousands of years to protect our brain, and these are called tight junction cells. We now know that there is research all over the planet showing that this tight junction that makes up the blood-brain barrier is now fractured with frequencies much lower than the proposed G5 networks. And this now is called leaky brain syndrome, where bacteria and viruses that previously could not cross the blood-brain barrier are crossing the blood-brain barrier. The same thing happens in the gut, you've probably heard of leaky gut syndrome, and that also happens in the cells in the intestinal wall. So, if you, if you just start on this book that I've given you, page fifty-six, and read through page seventy-one, you will understand and have a good assessment of what happens to the DNA and what happens to these cells. The, there is such an increase in electromagnetic sensitivities, and the most common things that we see in our clinic when we can find no evidence in blood work and pathologies, things like headaches, migraines, shortness of breath, insomnia, heart palpitations, behavior disorders, irritability, tinnitus, ringing in the ears, vertigo, dizziness, nausea, blurred vision, fatigue, food allergies, because of the way the mast cells just underneath our skin produce allergens just underneath our skin, well-documented all over the planet. Nosebleeds, skin irritations, tingling, itching, numbness in the extremities, and a dramatic increase in Lyme disease. So, I, I just want to give you this brief background, but present you with a book that is, this is the third edition of this, as new research comes out. And I want to thank Dr. Massid for even considering looking at this. You may or may not now know that there are now nine states who have opted to not employ these meters. What's most alarming is the conduct of companies like Duke Energy, for example, who will tell you that they don't have and don't employ smart meters. They've just changed the name to a different name, because you can readily measure the information coming out of this. Even more shocking is that they are selling this information, that every appliance now that has a code, or when your meters are read this way, it is not just the fact that it's cheaper because somebody doesn't have, have to get out and read your mechanical meter. This information is being coded, it's being put in algorithms, and in states like California, for example, if they, they, the footprint for using, say, a vibrator, they will code that and how many times a person uses it, and you'll get some very interesting mail in your mailbox very soon. And this is being done in other states, and it will be done here if this technology is approved. There are ways, safety ways, we discarded fiber optic cables, which are a hundred percent safe for aberrant currents that we're all being exposed to. The current estimates now in the scientific community in Europe- The current estimates now in the scientific community in Europe is that fifteen percent of the people are now hyper-electro-sensitive in Europe, and in an exposure that the G-five network is proposing, that in twenty years, one hundred percent of the population will be electro-hypersensitive because of the breaks it causes in DNA material. So I think, I want to applaud you for being progressive enough to even look at something like this, but this can be a shot heard around the world. And I'm willing to at my own expense bring researchers like Dr. Blank from Columbia University and other people from around the world here. And I want to applaud your efforts at being open-minded to look at it. And the best information I can give you is the book that I give to Dr. Massid for you to peruse, and maybe in a month, you might want to fire some hard questions at me based on the information that's in this book. And I will provide Dr. Massid with the safety study produced by the Italian government and the Italian Workers Union, because it, that piece of research is now being spread all over Europe because of the dangers. You should know that in no military installation in America is there these aberrant currents being utilized. They're all, military installations are not being exposed, they're all fiber optic cables. And the same thing with Social Security Administration and most agencies of government. Yet, we, the people, are still very vulnerable to this. And I want to make you aware of a website, it's called antennasearch.com. You can pull it up right now on your phone, and what you will get is a, you can put your own address in there, and what you will get is a four-mile radius around your home or this building, and it will tell you how many antenn, antennas and cell towers there are, and when the latest ones were put up there. I can guarantee you, you will all be shocked at the amount of exposure that you are being exposed to in your own homes. And with the advent of smart meters, that will be readily increased. So I want to thank you for your attention, and thank you, Dr. Massid, for your progress.
Paul, would you hang for just a second? I'm gonna make a few comments, and if any of the audience has a question, we'll let you go forward with that. I had my house evaluated. I'm one of these people that just, I don't like anything that could endanger me. The company is the only one around that I could find, IET, and they gave me a report. And I kind of had a feeling from the very first, you have something funny there to Interestingly enough, of all my bedrooms, bathrooms, office, everything, the, as you would expect, the highest magnetic field was in my office. But the interesting thing is the second-most electromagnetic increase was in my outside driveway, out of the whole house. And that's because of these antennas. And I find, this is with a very conservative company. So I'm saying, Ms. Baldi talked to it earlier, are we gonna be, are we gonna control ourselves? Is America gonna be free? Or do they have the right to come on my property, put this meter on, that definitely puts out bad electricity and allows them to sell this information, just like Paul said? They can sell information, they know when you're home, they know when you're not. If someone wants to hack into that information, they may just want to rob you. And it is, it's been, being tested in courts all over the country for a violation of the Fourth Amendment. I don't think we should sit by and do nothing. And I'm asking the, the council here to make a resolution. We don't have any teeth, you know that. Make a resolution.
Did I say you did?
Sorry. Smart meter?
I was looking for antennasearch.com.
That said, I really would like to push forward, have a resolution made. I have several, Jim has several. The major, I'm sorry, the major.
I don't, I don't have any resolutions.
Oh, I thought you had seen some or something. Well, I've got some. Let me misspeak, let me resppeak. I have some. We can, what I would like to do is prepare a resolution for the next council meeting, let Jim put together what he thinks is appropriate. The major things I think we would like to do is have an opt-out of these smart meters without a financial penalty. Because what they've done in South Carolina is that you can opt out, we'll take that meter back, and we'll put it in an analog, and you pay a hundred dollars for that, and you pay thirty dollars a month, so we can read it. All the while, every politician in this country that I've seen is talking about, "We want more jobs, we want more jobs." But we, now we can take another section, meter readers, no meter readers. By the way, they never read them anyway. They always guesstimated for three or four months, and then they read them. We're not, it's no burden to them, I can tell you that. This gentleman, and I've studied it a while, I do have some medical background, is it dangerous? Go ahead, Terry, what? I thought you wanted to talk.
I was waiting for you to finish.
I'll finish.
This is marked as an information-only item, so I don't think we can take action. However, I've done quite a bit of background search on this. One will tell you yes, one will tell you no. You'll get as many arguments each way as you can probably find people in the world. But what worries me more than, well, I guess it shouldn't worry me more, but what I think is more of a solid argument against this and smart meters is the fact, and, Doctor, you brought this up, is the fact that these people can know and are able to control, to some extent, your personal information by how you use your electric grid in your home. So that bothers me. There were also articles about how these meters are not quite accurate, how there's billing changes, and it just sounds like it's problematic. And so I would be in favor of opting out at a future date if we were to go that route. That would be the way I think we should follow suit and opt out of, if that is legally possible to create in our own city.
What? I can tell you, it is not, it is not legal. We can only join the ground.
The, I, I'm familiar with it, just haven't read the newspaper for the last few years. Duke Energy, I believe, is our provider. Chapter three sixty-six of the Florida statutes, it's, I'm sure it's five hundred pages, that we're preempted by the state public utilities. There's an agency that sets rules, et cetera. We have no legal ability to force Duke Energy, which although trades on the stock exchange, is a private company, does business as a utility, the city has no authority whatsoever to make the opt-out provision mandatory. We can't pass an ordinance that says our citizens, you know, must be given this. I assure you, you pass that ordinance, even if you didn't enforce it, you'd have one hell of a lawsuit here.
Wait, let me.
Well, let me just finish. We cannot regulate that utility, period. I'm sure a lot of people would like to. Now, what they've done in other states is, the state legislature, I think California mostly, you can correct me, you probably know more, but if I remember reading, the state of California, the state legislature passed legislation requiring the public utilities to offer an opt-out program. But as a city, you can only pass a resolution that says we'd like to see our state legislatures do that, but we can't force Duke Energy to have or have or not a certain meter in this city, I can assure you of that.
And I can assure you that I had no idea, or no thought, that we could. But if more cities go forward with this, they will hear politicians, or politicians will hear us. And do I know that a resolution by us will not make any Duke Energy shudder? I do. But Duke Energy is absolutely a bunch of liars. I went through this with them on my own house. They, I put in solar, okay? So my bill goes down, a hundred and fourteen dollars a month, next month, a hundred and fourteen dollars, next month, three hundred and twenty dollars, next month, three hundred and sixty dollars, next month, five hundred and twelve dollars. Now I'm calling Jim, day, in and out. Next month, five twenty. I'm back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. Can you come check this meter? I can't, just added half the energy I need, and my bill's up to five twenty. And they said, "We can come remove it, but we can't check it for accuracy." And I say, if every city in this country puts a resolution out, some politicians are gonna listen. And, and I, there's, we're not forcing anything on anyone. If you want a smart meter, you can have it. We're just asking for, some of us, and as Paul said, a large amount of this population is becoming electro-hypersensitive. All we're saying is, these peo, we would like to see Duke Energy allow these people to not have a smart meter. And I don't see that as any, any problem for anyone. If you guys all want one, you can have it. I'd rather not. And so I don't, and I didn't mark this as a, what'd you say?
Action item.
As action, as far as I was, I'm concerned. And I really would like to see us go forward. We're a little bitty per, fish in the, in the pond. But it, nothing goes forward unless you try. And if you're gonna be an American, I don't see how you let them stick things on our house that can be invasive. So I would love to have a motion to set a resolution. Jim can figure that out, I can be sure to you if he can. Here's three. And so it's up to council. Lead, don't follow.
I would make the motion if it had an action item.
I agenda'd that, and I didn't put no action.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Jim, how do we handle that?
See, I did this, I didn't make it do it for. I guess it's information only, you could pass a motion to have a resolution passed and vote on it at the next time. I mean, you're just having something prepared, kind of like, you know, that wouldn't be action. Do you understand what I mean? It's gonna come back to the public one more time.
And everything I put on the agenda is action.
And secondly, and, and secondly, there is no legal significance to a resolution. It has none. Do you understand what I mean? So that's as non-action as you can get.
Okay.
So you can have it prepared, kind of like drafting an ordinance.
A consensus would do.
Right. We just say, have, uh.
Counsel.
Jim, prepare one that he thinks is appropriate. We massage it, but at least we stepped forward. We're, we're gonna want opt-out, we're gonna want no financial penalty, and that's about it. So.
So you need a motion?
Yes, I do.
I'll make the motion.
Motion to establish a resolution.
Establish a resolution for the opt-out provisions of the smart meters and the like.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I'll have a motion in a second. Would the public like to ask Paul any questions or speak to this? Sandy?
I think that we all need a little more information. I'm with you on a resolution, and I like my privacy, but I don't think many of us in the public have ever heard of this before, so it's like a shock to us. Is there anything that, that you can put out, just like a newsletter or something, just send to our people so they understand more what it is? That's just.
Sandy, let me tell you, most people are not gonna look at this, not, they're not gonna understand the.
I'm saying, like, beware, you know? Something where people understand before it happens that they just put it on without us saying yes or no. I agree.
It is already being done. You're, they're putting it on all across the country. It's been fed.
And here, in our city I'm talking about.
They're being put here.
In our city they're putting it on?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Write that resolution up.
Write it, okay. Anyone else like to speak to this?
I'll, I'll just thank you for your time, and I'll leave you with one last fact, that Dr. Blank and his research team at Columbia University measured the baseline solar radiation on the Columbia University campus. And then they measured the amount of radiation, knowing what the baseline solar radiation is. And on Columbia University, it was one million times greater than the baseline solar radiation coming from our sun. The estimates, if the G-five network is employed in New York City within two years, it will be a trillion times the basic baseline solar radiation emitted from our sun.
Thank you. Anyone, any questions for Paul?
No, thank you for coming, though.
Thank you for having me.
And thank you for the book.
Thank you.
So guys, I, all I'm saying is, there are some people that will not, that will be hypersensitive, there are some people that just don't want the problems with the invasion of privacy. We're not making, we're not forcing anything on anyone.
You want to vote on this motion and say?
I sure do. We have a motion to pass a resolution to opt-out of smart meters. All in favor?
Point of order?
Yes, please.
The motion was not to pass a resolution. The motion was to prepare a resolution for later time.
Boy, I wouldn't want that to happen. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Well done. Okay, let's go fast for. What would you?
Your, your.
Okay, we're gonna move, uh.
Number five.
Five to discussion now.
I'll take that.
You want to take that one, Jim?
I had to, with, pursuant to council's instructions, I prepared a draft of a minimum housing standards, more specifically, a residential maintenance standard, same thing. I did it with the information I was given at the last meeting. You go to section three, you'll see pretty much what was shown you before, which, this is some of, some of Pasco County, some of Newport Ritchie, it's pretty standard stuff. I'll answer any questions or council's action, if they want me to bring it back for a first reading.
I was looking at the bottom of page two. It seems like there's some verbiage missing or something.
It didn't print.
I'm getting this combustible, non-combustible, is there anything, what was before that?
I'm sorry, uh.
Number five.
On page two, you said?
Yeah.
Oh, it's just, it, the, when the clerk put the agenda together, they just printed the page number over it. I can read it to you if you want to have it here.
Can't be much.
Uh, yeah, under premises, it would say rubbish. Uh, yeah, under premises, it's, it would say rubbish period combustible and non-combustible waste materials, that's what we read.
Okay.
Yes.
Comments?
Well, can we, can we address, have the public address some of their concerns?
Well, after we do.
Yeah, um... Jim, I have to ask, on the tarps, and, and that's one of my pet peeves about things through the city, is people using tarps for sidewalls, or garage doors, or hiding junk behind, um, partitions or something. The way this is written, I'm not sure, would, do, would you feel that would give enough teeth to code enforcement to handle that?
Um, I actually have read all of this more times than I'd like to, but could you tell me where the tarp section is, make my life simpler?
Uh, yeah, under roofs.
He talks a lot about roofs and tarps.
Two F.
Okay. I, I'm sorry, councilman, your question was?
Well, under a section, um...
Yeah. This is for roof tarps, is when I read it, I remember it.
Okay, so that, if, there's a house over on the south side that has used blue tarps to, uh, as a garage door, basically, to cover the front of their garage, which is full of stuff, um, and on the side of it. Um, I'd like to see some kind of verbiage in this that would address that as well.
Well, what are they doing exactly? They like, like, there's something wrong with the wall?
Instead of a garage door, something, just hang them like walls.
Well, y- you have, I'd have to really study it to give you a good answer on that, but maintenance of exterior surfaces above it, okay, then you have exterior walls above that, it would probably fall into one of those categories, I'd really have to study it, most likely. I, I, the, the tarp one's always a, uh, a big one, because when a hurricane comes through and stuff, cities sometimes extend them by emergency ordinance, sometimes they're just publicly announced, we're gonna let tarps for a longer period of time. I'm not sure I've ever seen anything more specific about tarps on walls. I would think that maintenance of exterior, all exterior ser- it's, it's, it's maintained, surfaces are repainted, right? It wouldn't, it'd be a violation of E, right?
Correct, yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just so they have the, uh...
Yeah.
The tools they need to take care of that.
Yeah, under section E should be able to take care of that. Tarps are one of our major, was a really significant concern, both by staff and by council. Uh, item, section E would, would come into play with respect to anyone using a tarp for an exterior surface.
Could probably also fall under exterior door, if they're using...
Correct. Exteriors in general.
Yeah, there's a, exterior walls, doors. You know, I've, I've seen many of these prosecuted, and, uh, should use some words, a code enforcement thing, but, uh, many, many of them, and, uh, judges call, you understand what I mean, like, how much mill, though, is too much mill, though? You understand, judges are people, too, and, and they know that, you know, they don't go crazy about these things, okay? They think you're being too picky, the judge would be the first one to tell you, tarp on the side of a building is, is not gonna fly, okay?
What is it, Jim, now, that you're looking for on this draft?
I'm really crazy, I thought I...
No, from us.
Oh, oh, legally?
Yes.
Yeah, the way it works is, uh, to pass an ordinance, you have to have two readings, okay? So normally, when I bring it back as a draft, I move to bring it back for a first reading. And the way that works, just for future reference, is when I bring it back for a first reading, I'll come back at the next meeting, if that's what you just, the council decides, and I'll read it by title only. Okay, it'll be, I'll say ordinance number, there'd be a number assigned to it, it'll be getting ready for advertising on the second meeting, second reading, and I'll just read the title, you'll vote, get a public input, and then you're allowed to change it after the first reading, but only minor changes.
Okay.
If it's major changes, you gotta go back to the beginning. So the motion I've been looking for is motion to proceed with the ordinance, that's all, nothing else.
At this level?
Right now, yeah, it's, it's, that'd be the next step to making it law, I would say, bring it back for a formal reading, first reading.
All right.
That's all.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
I, I'd like to make a motion to proceed on the draft.
Okay, have a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, have a motion and a second, I think we need to bring, so, to the, um, people first, would anyone like to speak to that?
My name is Robert Breedlove, I'm at fifty-one forty-three, Limestone Drive, on the south side. I did sign in on the agenda, you notice there, Mayor. Honorable Mayor, honorable Council, I congratulate you on attaining the position you have, and for your concern for the citizens of this city. I would like to remind you that that includes all citizens, not just your neighbors, not just your peers, all of us. Our city is unique. We have the ability to provide someone with a gated presence, a gated residence, behind, where they have practically their own police force. We have the ability to provide those with less stringent homeowner association rule subdivisions, where everything you do is regulated by civil rules. We have the ability to have comfortable, comfortable neighborhoods for those who don't want homeowner association rules, those who don't want stringent, uh, things to abide by in their personal life. We also have areas where we have woods, where we have nature. We might have snakes. I happen to like snakes, 'cause they keep the rodents down. I lived in a house in the country, in the middle of a big field. Well, if you wanna see rodents, best place to see 'em. But I had mama snake, big old rat snake, living in the crawl space. I never saw the first mouse in six years I lived in that residence. So I don't see a snake as a nuisance, as it is described in this new residential maintenance ordinance. We had a first draft of this ordinance prepared by city employees, prepared by those you hire, who apparently listened to the entire city. This was bypassed as insignificant. We're talking about the people who are out there in the city, dealing with residents every day, and they picked what they thought the city was most concerned about, which was the deteriorating rental properties that we see around us. We see 'em everywhere, but more particularly, we see 'em in areas that aren't gated, and that don't have HOAs. So I recognize there is some rules needed, however, we have building codes, do we not? We have other codes, do we not? Why do we need more codes to enforce what's already encoded or codified? We have several requests made at the last meeting, that we have a workshop on this. But for some reason, this is taken on a level of importance, and Mayor...
Let him, yeah.
May I have a couple minutes?
Sure, yes, you...
This is important. For some reason, this issue needs to be rushed, needs to be pushed, needs to be made into an ordinance, so that we can then have discussion. That's not the way this works, gentlemen, ladies. It's not the way we govern ourselves. That's the way we let Pasco County govern us. But if we wanna govern ourselves, as, as Paul spoke of, and I have not spoken with her about this, but her and I agree lockstep, one time, I agree with her a hundred percent.
The first time?
First time? Well, that's okay.
That's all right, we gotta get together sometime.
So we have, we have residents here who don't make much money, they own a home, and that home is all they've got between homelessness and their, theirs themselves. So if we put an ordinance that makes dust a nuisance, then what are we telling this resident? "I have a dusty house." Does that make my house not meet code? You go come in and tell me I've got to do something about my dusty house, you don't like dust.
Yeah.
So, I'm, I'm overstating my time, but that's why we need a workshop, why we need for a get-together where we can have this interaction, where we can have this working through the line items that some may find so important, while others don't, to reach a consensual, common agreement on what this city really wants. I have a lot more points I could bring up, this is not the time. A workshop would be the time. Thank you.
Okay, we must have someone else?
Bill Clumb, seventy-eight Tenchaska Street, Fort Ritchie, Florida. Uh, I agree with what Bob said, uh, this is a very serious subject. Um, what we have before us, or what is being presented, is apparently, pretty much, is copied over from the county. Um, I, I agree that, uh, our city code folks worked on this a lot, I really'd like to take a look at that, I agree, there should be a workshop on that. Uh, if you would, I would like to submit to council, to save you a lot of time and listen to me blathering. I basically took it, and I did some highlighting and strike-throughs with my opinions, look at it, and then you don't have to listen to me, if that's okay.
Sure.
Okay? There's seven, I have a couple actions as well, but... I, I find it kind of interesting that, um, the, the agenda item right before us, uh, one of the highlights of everybody's concern was Fourth Amendment privacy. Uh, probably, uh, just ballpark it, twenty to twenty-five, maybe thirty percent of what's in what we've got here is a Fourth Amendment violation. Um, yes, we don't meet people coming into our homes, I, I know that it's being said, well, only if happened if they're invited in, or if a tenant calls them in, but that's not in the code, it's not what it says. I think that there is so many changes that needs to be made to what you have before you, to go to a first reading is premature at this time. You should have a workshop, or at least another meeting, and, and continue it from there. Um, I'll close on that, the other one thing I'll, I'll say is there, there was something I wanted to say earlier as to the grant program, when I said restricting to R-one, R-two, homesteaded. The other thing that Fort Ritchie does to keep it for those dwellings that you really wanna see improvement in, is, say, an assessed value of the structure of the building, of a certain amount, fifty thousand, seventy-five thousand, not the property...
You mean for participation in the grant?
Not the accessory, for, at getting the grants. What I'm trying to help you do is target those houses you actually, that actually need fixing, and are most likely to be low-income people that can't afford doing it. So if you restrict it to R-one, R-two, homesteaded, and you fix it at, with an assessed value of the structure only, and pick a value, fifty thousand, seventy-five thousand, I'll think you, I think you'll find, you're gonna get the most bang for your buck out of that grant program.
That, that, that may be, well, true. Uh, the code enforcement guys and I talked about possibly them looking at people that were fixed income and would be cited under these, and...
The problem with fixed income is, is that there's an awful lot of people, as some of you know, I spent, uh, the first three months of this year doing volunteer tax preparation for United Way, I did a lot of tax returns. Uh, there's a lot of people, just a few more seconds. There's a lot of people that earn so low, they don't have to file taxes. So it would be hard for them to prove to you exactly what their income is.
I think what I'm saying to you is, if they're, if they see them, I guess we can find a way to find the financial situation, if they see them, they're gonna, they know they'll be coded, they tell them, depending on the financial situation, you're gonna be coded for this, and they'll get a good, I kinda trust them more than anyone...
Right.
To give those people that aren't wealthy, which...
Well, yeah, and like I said, and I agree, I'd like, the only thing I'm saying is that income verification is a pretty tough thing to do. When you're talking about R-one, R-two, is it homesteaded, what is the assessed value of the property, that's all something that a city staff member can go right to the property appraiser site, we can all do it, and have all that information on that one page, and you can make a very quick decision whether they're eligible or not. So, and that's to help the staff, uh, you know, otherwise, it's like, pull together a financial statement, sign affidavits, do all kinds of crazy stuff, and that can make it very difficult.
Yeah, well, it's problematic.
I think the grant program is a great idea, I was for it when, when we had it before, it got phased out, I wasn't happy about it, I'm very happy to see it coming back.
Well, we did learn about that, that some people with a lot of money get it, too.
Well, and that's why the suggestions I'm making, that was, of course, you guys were already following in your last discussion, of trying to make sure you target that money to truly blighted properties, as opposed to, uh, somebody, and I'm not gonna name areas or anything, but I'll just give you a general specific, they own, you know, a half-million-dollar piece of property, and they get some money to put some, a new bay window in the front. I mean, that's not a blighted building.
There's a little bit of shame.
Yeah, so, thank you very much for the extra time.
And Ms. Volby, I, I know you would wanna speak.
Of course I would speak. Sandra School, the eighty-sixth Well Green Street. You know, uh, you just said something to Bill, where you trust our code department to choose about giving the grant. Well, why didn't you guys trust our code department with the codes that they wrote? Why are we pushing this through so quickly? Why are we not doing for our city what our city needs? Our code department knows our city. The county code does not know our little city. Why do we have a code department? Why do we tell them to do things if you're not gonna take their advice? Why are you pushing this through so quickly? It's not a good idea. I'm gonna leave you with that before I am told to sit down.
May, may I just speak to that, Sandy? We have been talking code for five, six years?
Yes.
And that's why I think this should be passed, and if it doesn't work, it's not written in stone.
But, we've been talking codes, why not use our code department's work? That's what I'm saying, not the county's. That's what I'm talking about. Thank you.
Jim? Might ask a question.
Oh, yes.
Were you not instructed to use the code they came up with, and, and the county code, and blend them?
We combined.
Yeah, what I did, what I did, what, is that, what I did was, I used the three pages that, uh, the city department gave, and then I, in addition to that, added the highlighted ones from the county. I think the comment was, I don't, I think her comment was, "Why don't you just use these, why do we need these?", as opposed to, "We didn't use these." You understand what I...
Got you.
I, I think that's what...
Just wanna make sure people knew that we didn't just grab the county code.
Yeah.
However, I will make this statement, I'll, and I'm sure you're gonna agree with me, every time we go and create an ordinance, where do we go to get the base of that ordinance? Usually, the county, or some other city in Florida, because we just don't write the verbiage ourself, we usually have a base we're working off of from somewhere, so...
That, that, that's very true, and with minimum housing, on, these ordinances exist in all fifty states just about, I mean, they're very generic, I don't think the county or Newport Ritchie made it up either, you know, these are very, very generic. Uh, I'm not saying that whether you should use the county's portion or not, but is it generic? You know, how much you wanna have and things like that, but they're, they're relatively generic.
Oh, I'm sorry, Carl. Never forget you.
Carl Roth, eighty-thirty-one Island Drive. Uh, I had a chance to look at the ordinance, and I agree with the statements that we probably need a workshop on, mostly from the standpoint of cleanliness. My wife's very concerned about somebody coming in and inspecting her toilets, and, uh, white gloves being handed out, that's the general scuttlebutt out there, so, uh, I, I needed to make that statement so I could come home tonight. But more importantly, backing up a second, the, uh, the city was identified as a community redevelopment agency several years ago. So my understanding is that we're concerned about blight and, uh, slums throughout the entire city. My question on, on this really is, why aren't commercial properties identified as part of a parcel of this? Uh, their paint can be coming off, their windows can be broken, all of the above, and I don't think it's equitable for the entire community, because we have commercial intermixed with residential throughout. Most, uh, housing standards that are developed in the, across the country... Most housing standards that are developed in the, across the country are developed to address all the issues throughout the city. So you can't look at just one parcel here and one parcel there. You have to look at the entire area. So I would encourage, we really need to look at this from a complete standpoint from the city. Commercial parcels are part and parcel of what, of our community. Also, I mentioned the enforcement components. Couple things on timeframes, anybody that's been here for a while. Hurricanes, even now since Irma in September of last year, we still have people that are trying to get their roofs finished, fixed. That's more than three months, more than six months. I think the timeframes need to be evaluated. Maybe we get some contractors in as part of these workshops so we can get a better understanding of what it will take to address this. Some of the things as far as emergency protective coverings, we're talking about three days and pulling them off. If the city's not accessible, people can't get to their property, that's not realistic. So I think we need to put some realism in what we're writing here, and I think some folks can bring some perspectives about that might, might be helpful. I'm, I'm frankly a little concerned about the overreach on this type of ordinance. I don't think it's necessarily been tested legally. I know there's a bunch of them out there that have been developed since the fifties here, minimally in the state of Florida. But if you recall, and Mr. Muse can probably talk to this to a degree, is the Florida Bill, the Florida Building Code was in the same state up through the nineties, and it was finally homogenized in nineteen ninety-eight by the Florida Legislature, and a new code came out in two thousand and two. We've been living with that every three years. Part of the problem was our municipalities, our counties, and other entities have different standards throughout. We, we're creating this further by this type of ordinance. So I just question the rationale of what we're really trying to achieve. The other thing is, on the Florida Building Code, I know in the city, we're not protecting residents associated with just the enforcement of the Florida Building Code. For example, in my roof that I had installed, I had to make sure that the builder used adequate amount of adhesive to put that down. The Building Code said nothing about it. The building inspector said nothing about it. It was up to me to make sure that that took place. So, this, I'm not the only one, there's multiple situations like this that we're not even enforcing the things that we have out there. And the Florida Building Code is fairly important since we live in a hurricane-rich environment most recently. So, just wanna make sure we do our blocking and tackling first before we add on other things that we may not be able to cover. At least we consider that in whatever we put in place. Also, and lastly, I would just ask, one of the things here, it's referenced more often than not tenants and not owners that need to be accountable. I would encourage that we look at owners being accountable for their property and minimizing the impact on tenants. And I've seen that in a number of codes that are written throughout, and I question the rationale on that. Are we trying to protect people from taking care of their property that are the owners that should be accountable because of all the investors and whatnot we have out there? So, I would, I would encourage that we make sure that owners are accountable and not just tenants if this is leased property, or we have Aaron BB and B coming in, or whoever it happens to be.
I think Jim can probably speak to that. The, by the way, tell your wife that she's already passed my white glove test, and nobody's gonna come in your house unless you invite them. Otherwise, that would only pertain to rental properties. If the renter says his toilet's blocked.
The beginning of it, the first paragraph, "No person shall occupy as owner occupant", that's a house you're living in yourself. "Or let or sublet to another for occupancy", that means renting your property. So, "No person shall own and occupy a building or rent to somebody else unless they do all these things." So these are all against the owner. Okay, now some of, there's one or two things in here like rubbish and a couple of things like that, but when it comes to the structures and everything else, this is all against the owner. Okay, we didn't, it was other things that I've seen other towns, and I can go through it and pick out just the two or three that has to do like fire, you know, there's a couple of places in here about maybe smoke detectors or something like that, you know? But most of it is, but I could point them out if council wants to see them, but they're very few. That yours, Dr. Bloom, did you, pretty much, did you catch any?
Yeah, I agree, I think it's the owner's.
It's the owner, it's set up that way. Yeah, it's, it's set up that way, but I can point them out, but there isn't a lot, 'cause I was very sensitive to that. Now, here, debris, here's debris. It should be lawful for any owner occupant tenant unless, see, that's what you've got, the debris. Okay, but as far as fixing the building, you know, as far as, you know, maybe some of the mildew outside, that's kind of a questionable one, but I could point out if council wants to see it.
Mostly I was thinking from Bill's standpoint and other code enforcement, it's better where you can grab somebody around the neck and get them to fix it rather than having, you know, well, they're here and they're there, or whatever it happens to be. You can just grab the owner and say, "Hey, you're accountable, fix it." Makes it easier for our enforcement.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else to the public? Bring it back, back to council. Any comments?
It seems to me that the public wants to have a workshop.
Well, at least three of them.
At least three of them, but who, you know, I think that there are people that really want to come in and talk about it so that they'll understand that there's nobody gonna come in their house and do a white glove test on them. I mean, I really, they just don't understand it. So if we don't have something where we can explain this to them, they are upset. I don't blame them.
Now, Ms. Rowell, yeah, I agree with you in many ways, but if they're really concerned, surely they listened to the last one, they're listening now, 'cause nobody's been there. Nobody's coming in your house. Nobody's coming in your house. And I just, I watched this, five years, six years, we've been gonna have a workshop. Nothing happens, and when we have it, there will be nobody there. So what, my thought, this is my thought, and anyone else can speak, I better get in the microphone. Anybody else can speak differently, and I certainly don't really have a hard line except for, once you do it, you find the problems. And then you go back and redo it. As opposed to having a bunch of people coming in saying, "I don't want them looking at my toilets." Well, I couldn't look at their toilets.
That needs to be explained to them that way. That's the only thing. We have been promising these people a workshop for four months, and we held off because of the election, and now all of a sudden we can't have one?
You can have anything, I'm one vote. I, that's not my particular way of going, doing it, because I know that workshop or no workshop, we won't get it right the first time.
If they don't show up, then we will go ahead and do what you planned. Actually, I don't have any problem with any of this, myself personally. But the thing is, is the, the, these are the people that voted for us.
Well, and I'm absolutely with you.
And we promised them this.
We promised them what?
A workshop.
Well, I don't, I didn't.
We did.
It's been all business for months.
I'm sorry?
It's been in my old business for several months.
And that's where it'll probably, that's what I keep saying. Do something, and then when we, and then if the residents have a problem with it, do, do your workshop. Otherwise, we won't have anyone. I've been watching this over and over for the history. How many workshops you been to?
Maybe they'll change. I mean, the whole, the whole constitution of the, the council has changed, so maybe the people feel like they can talk to us again.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes, okay, yes.
There, there's an old saying, Ms. Rowell. Doing more of the same and expecting a different result is the definition of insanity. By the way, there's a small constitutional amendment called the Fourth Amendment. It's the right to privacy. Nobody can just come into your house. You have a right to that privacy.
Dr. Bloom, would you please talk to the people and quit talking to me about it? 'Cause I understand your point.
Well, no, you just voiced your opinion, I'm just, I'm just giving you a rebuttal, and I'm just letting the people who, who are hearing me talk right now know that nobody is coming into your house. You have the right to privacy under the United States Constitution.
Except for Duke Energy and Smart meters.
Right.
Well, they don't come in your house, they stay on the outside of your house. Mr. Mayor, I would like to motion to limit, to, to end the discussion on this and, and proceed with the vote.
Okay, second? For limiting discussion? Hold on, I did already recognize Bill. Let's hold on that one and take it after that.
Bill Colombo, seventy-eighty-Ten Chesapeake Street. You must have forgot when we had the workshops on the noise ordinance.
On the what?
The noise ordinance, when I was on council.
You mean the ones that have never been effective and we never got right?
Well, what I'm telling you is there were proposals, there were workshops, and the workshops resulted in a lot of changes in what was ultimately passed. Workshops do work if people are interested in them. I know you said you've never seen a workshop work. That would work. I can't say I like the way it worked.
It still didn't work.
It did in fact work. Uh, just as a point of order for everybody, Roberts rules, members of a committee or people in the audience address the chair, that's you. They don't address each other.
You got it.
I done it.
All right. Now, we've heard from some of the people, I haven't heard anything from anyone. Judge Sultan, he is the only one that's spoken to me, not, no real... I don't see, this seems like a tempest in a teapot to me. If you pass it and there are some real bumps, you change it. And just like Bill's talking about the noise ordinance, we've, we've wrestled with that for years and years, and we've never gotten anything effective. So, I don't know, I, that's up to the council. My preference is pass it, see if somebody has a, you know, league, a, a real problem, or we see problems that are in here that, that we don't see currently. But that is up, I'm only one vote, that is...
That's not necessarily the problem that we're talking about. We're talking about, we said we would give people the opportunity to do it. That's what I think Ms. Rowell's and my issue were on the last vote, was we did not give them the opportunity before we put this forward. I can see we can probably end up voting on the same lines as we did last time because I feel that they should have the opportunity. We told them, we, I voted that way at the last meeting. So I don't think, I, my personal feelings have not changed on the matter. My, my vote will still be, will be nay.
I think we're gonna have the same vote.
That's, I'm just voicing my opinion, so...
If we just go along the road... Oh, I'm sorry, if we were to go along the road we're on, it, would it be ridiculous to have a workshop after, or one month after you pass it? If there's any, I wanna see somebody that has a problem with a real problem. And I think all I'm gonna get is, "How are you gonna come in my house and look at my toilet? How are you gonna come in? We aren't coming in your house." And I don't know if you...
There's no legal question there, that's a policy question, Mr. Mayor, but as a point of order, Dr. Bloom made a motion to call the question. It doesn't need a second, you should ask, you don't need to recognize that, but normally what you would do is say, "Who wants to hear you call the question now? You got three, you call the question." Put it to vote. So either call the question or put that to a vote, but you can't keep going once that's been done.
Okay, call the question?
No.
You want to bring the vote?
Ask everybody, you wanna call the question, you wanna put it to a vote, you want more conversation? You go around the table, that's the purpose of what that program did.
Yeah.
More?
No.
He, he wants to call. You don't have to ask him, we know what he wants.
I'm asking Terry. He wants to call the question. I'll start it. You wanna call the question and vote?
So I would be...
Question just, do you want the, you wanna put to vote now, or you wanna keep talking about it?
I'd rather keep talking about it.
Okay.
All right. Fire. Speak to me, and, and I, I know what this is, I know what it is. And I share both sides. I really do. I just think we're making a lot over nothing. And if we take, if we just took what these, our own code enforcement people put forth, that might even settle Sandy's problem. I don't know. I don't know the answer.
That's why we'll have a workshop.
I don't think we can go back. It's out of order, you can't take, you can't take the town of order.
No, and we're in motion, so...
I just need direction.
Call the vote.
Call the vote? Is that what you said?
I said, "You need to call the vote unless there's..."
Call the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, I would like to say, in the future, if you have any problem, hey, I don't even see that there's a problem if we had a workshop now. We, we just called that, actually, he's gotta bring a second reading. You call a workshop now, I don't think that would be, or two months in the future. See, see if there's a problem. I mean, I don't have, but I hear you talking, Bill. I mean, I hear your brain click. Okay, enough of this.
That was late. First reading.
It was a draft.
No, I'm sorry, it's a draft.
Right, now, I don't know how Jim feels about it. Do you want any input for the rest of it?
Yeah, I was confused, 'cause it was written up like it was a first reading.
Okay, I just said, do, would you like some, some input from Bill or Bob for the rest of this? We've got a draft and...
Minimum housing?
Yeah.
No, the motion's already been passed. I'm to call it back for first reading, I don't want any input, I can't change one word of it.
Oh, okay.
You wanted it, that's, that's the vote.
I thought we had the draft.
That's a draft, you just approved it for a first reading, it's coming back.
The draft is written in stone?
No, it is now that you made the vote.
Okay.
I'm bringing it back for a first reading. You want, the reason to have it here for the last hour was to see if you wanted to change it or maybe put it out there.
Mr. Mayor, if, if I can give some assurances to the general public.
Please.
We will move forward to implement these rules once they are promulgated. The people that you're looking at are here to help, they're not here to hinder. They're here to, to help achieve the goals that are set by our legislative body, this council. If we move forward and we find that there are problems, we will come back to council and ask for mo, for, for changes. We will do what we have to do. We'll listen to people like Mr. Colombo, like Ms. Baldi, like Mr. Lee, like Mr. Brown, and Mr. Birdlove. We, Breedlove, I apologize. We're not deaf, we're your creatures. We will follow the law. If there are problems with that law, you'll make us aware of it, and we'll make our council aware of it. They're not armed guards, they're here to protect the city and implement city ordinances, period. We're not going in your house, we're uninvited. That's, that's not what code enforcement is all about. In fact, the term court, code enforcement is really almost a misnomer. Mr. Muse has a different term for it. Bill, that term being?
Code compliance.
Code compliance. We'll work with the city, we'll work with individuals. We're not gonna throw anybody out of their house, we're gonna just simply follow the law. If in the future there are significant problems with what this council has just approved, it'll become readily apparent, and we'll make the changes, we'll come to council and allow the changes that are necessary.
And I think that's a, a better way of molding something for, I don't, we know we don't agree, you don't have to shake. It's better to mold it when you know the problems than to take something and get a workshop. And I'll get yours and Sandy's and Bill's input, and I won't get anybody else's probably. And then we'll get that, and then we'll still have to go back and redo this thing. So, it's done. Let's go to, uh, to number two.
Yes.
Payment approval for US Highway Nineteen. Mr. Luke?
Don't we skip the consent agenda, or we already did that?
No, you did.
We did the consent.
You did the consent agenda. Uh, this is the, the, the agenda item number two, payment approval for the US High, Highway Nineteen Landscape and Architect Services. Excuse me. Uh, city council, recall, the city was awarded three hundred thousand dollars from the FDOT District Seven Highway Landscape Reimbursement and Maintenance Grant to beautify the medians on US Highway Nineteen. At the city council meeting of March twenty-seventh, the proposal from Robert Gonzalez PE to develop landscape plans for the project was approved in the amount of thirty thousand dollars. Staff is requesting city... Staff is requesting City Council approve for payment a request in the amount of ten thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three, uh, dollars. Staff recommends the following motion. Motion to approve a payment request from Robert Gonzalez P.E. in the amount of ten thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars for the development of landscaping plans to beautify the medians on US High, Highway nineteen in keeping with, uh, the grant requirements and our receipt of that grant.
Okay. Anyone have any thoughts?
I've got a question. That ten thousand dollars, is that like a first payment?
That's a second payment.
The engineer has been issued two payments of five thousand, eight hundred dollars. So, this is the third payment, and then there'll be one additional payment left.
Okay, so it, it will come out to the total of?
Thirty thousand.
Thirty thou- yes, sir.
Now.
I'm sorry, I, I have a question. Is this just for the plans or is this for the actual landscaping?
No, no, no. This is for the actual design in keeping with requirements.
Yes.
Well.
Eh, in keeping with the requirements of the grant itself. These are the designs from FDOT that we have to submit to FDOT.
So, these are plans? This is not actual, the landscaping?
No, not the actual work itself. This is.
Just the plans?
This is the pla- yes, sir.
Okay.
I, I have to laugh because you're gonna fight it says thirty thousand.
Sorry, I, I.
Can I just make a little simple, uh, correct me when I make mistakes, a three hundred thousand, right?
Yes.
It's gonna cost two hundred and seventy thousand, just put the plans in. Okay, so we'll grant money. How many me, how many parcels are there?
Five, I believe.
No, it's more than that.
No, there are only seven.
Seven?
Only seven islands.
Yeah, seven islands?
Yes.
Seven islands? Yes, and some side things, yeah.
Roses?
Seven islands? Seven islands?
Yes.
Five plants per island. Two hundred and seventy thousand.
No, they're merited. No, no, they're required.
I mean.
It's all, it's all required under the FDOT grant.
These plans. You gotta remember, FDOT wants some pretty serious.
We went into the wrong line of business.
We already right. Uh, it's Bloom and I said, uh, plant planning company.
And the hours later.
But I do wanna say something. We did this once before and we did, we filled it out and we did everything right. And I asked the lady, is, do we have to water these? No, they'll be ze- zoeography.
Zero scape.
About the, zero scape, that's it. No, you don't have to water them. Guess what? They all died and then we got a big.
We have water out there now.
Yes, we do.
On everyone?
No, no, no one.
Well, they have the waters.
Four.
I guess. How many? I don't know. Is, is it part of this landscaping project?
Yes.
When they widened US nineteen DOT, ripped our li- water lines out. We have one water line to one.
Please speak here. What'd you say?
When US nine, D- DOT widened US nineteen for the turn lanes, they broke every line out to the islands but one.
So, we don't have?
Only one.
Deja vu all over again. Um, well. But, okay, so are these engineers?
We're still ways away from the planting part, but by then we'll probably have an opportunity to rerun our lines.
Correct, about a year.
Wait, we gotta run across nineteen. That's gonna be a little rough, isn't it? I don't know. I don't know anymore. Government spends money like, uh, different way.
Motion to approve the request for?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, man, in the future, is, or just retrospectively, did we have to have a thirty thousand dollar engine in? I assume we did.
Yes, sir, in order to comply with FDOT requirements.
Yep, that was part of the ten percent, yes.
Okay, where are we?
Item, action number three.
That was actually, that ten percent was actually in there.
How many years do you have to have for a degree in planning medians?
Quite a bit. Item number three, sir.
God damn. Okay, we are now to request to purchase new playground equipment?
Yes, uh, agenda item number three, request to purchase new playground equipment using FERDAP grant funding. As City Council recall, the city was awarded two grants in the amount of fifty thousand dollars each from the Florida Recreational Development Assistance Program, FERDAP, to make improvements to Waterfront Park. Staff is requesting City Council approve the new playground equipment in the amount of fourteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Staff action and staff recommends the following motion. Motion to approve the purchase of the new playground equipment in the amount of fourteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars for Waterfront Park using FERDAP funding. All of the equipment being presented here is both, uh, is ADA approved, ADA sponsored, and, uh, once it is purchased, we'll be putting it in, in the Waterfront Park.
Who vetted these different?
Staff went through all of this. Yes, sir.
You know, as I, I look at this, I don't see any way a disabled child could play if they were in a wheelchair or anything else on this. And that was the original drive behind the idea that was brought to us several years back, that a child in a wheel- wheelchair could get on a swing and swing. That they could put that wheelchair on there, that there were other things that these children with severe handicaps could use. And that was the idea when the lady brought it to us from the police department. And I just do not see there's any way that, I don't know how they call this ADA approved. I, I don't see, I mean, they might be able to work with their hands and their arms, but I don't see how, there's no swing sets that they could use if they're in a wheelchair. There's all these things that were fundamental to this movement are not here. So, I will not support this.
Chris, if I may, sir.
Correct me if I'm, I'm wrong, Jocelyn. There are two grants for playground equipment, two ten thousand dollar grants. The, the swings, there will be a wheelchair, they'll be able to roll right up on there, and the swing will be able to use that. That's one grant. This piece of equipment has an ADA transfer station where the wheelchair will be able to roll up and the handicapped child will be able to access the playground equipment. It is ADA compliant. This bill is one of the first in this.
Mr. Rowe, um, which, which equipment piece are you talking about first of all?
Well, all of it that I'm seeing in the pictures here, I don't, you know, I'm, I'm looking, it looks like regular playground equi- equipment to me. I don't see, like I say, maybe the monkey bars, they could pull themselves up by their arms, but then what are they gonna do? Um, I don't see how you get a wheelchair up there to put them on the sled. I don't see how you do.
Are you looking at this one?
So, yeah, evidently they're not as ADA.
Terry, I can't stay with you.
Passables, I'd like them to be. Yeah.
Okay, I'm just trying to see which one yours.
I mean, that was the drive that our dear departed.
Well, I don't know. I certainly want the kids to be able to.
She wanted these children to be able to come to a park and play. And this is all great, but we've already got playground equipment there. And if we wanna replace it, then we replace it with this, but I, I really don't see how this is ADA. I, I'd have to, I'd have to, I'd have to be given some kind of education on how they would use this when they're, I, I don't see a place, and I've, I've looked at a lot of playgrounds and I just don't, I mean, the pictures aren't that great, but I kinda get the idea there's, it looks like standard playground equipment to me that would not make itself a.
Bill, you can?
Chris or Bill, can you?
This particular playground equipment does not have a swing. You're correct about that. You can see that in there, but it does meet ADA. ADA and of course, that's a federal program as you know, and it calls for a transfer system. And this is, this is it. If you can see from there and take my, it, it allows a child in a wheelchair to be transferred on to the, the playground equipment to, to play. Um, on, on the, if you look at this map, on the right-hand side, it says ADA transfer station. So, this does comply with ADA, albeit there's no swing. Now, I understand there's another.
Swing is separate. That's a separate one.
That's correct. That's correct. That's what I understand.
Actually constructed so that a, a wheelchair can go on to that swing.
That's correct. Does that help, Terry? Explain what this is.
A little, but I would see it be a challenge for them to, well.
Oh, it is.
They'd have to screw it around on their bottom. I, I don't think that was the drive that she had. She had been quite clear to us that she wanted something for people that were severely handicapped that can't normally use this type of equipment. She was our, uh, she was our, uh.
Police Department Records Clerk.
Pardon?
She was the Police Department Records Clerk.
Yes.
Christina Coolidge.
Yes, Christine. And, and this was something she had all put together and she had the equipment figured out and she had everything planned. Um, I know this is a step beyond that, I think, because of the grants that we've got. But I wanna make sure that her wish, and it was a good one, and she was going to take care of this without any funds from anybody. So, I would like to see that to honor her. I think this is the avenue that we wanna go and I, I wanna see something that's more accessible to someone who is handicapped than what I'm seeing here.
Well, once again, there's two, there's two ten thousand dollar grants. The second piece of equipment.
Is a swing.
You'll, it, it's a swing.
So, that's all we're gonna give the poor people that are handicapped is a swing?
But you gotta understand, we, we have a grant for ten thousand dollars. If you want a piece of a playground equipment that you can actually, a wheelchair can roll up on, you're gonna spend fifty to a hundred thousand dollars. We've done the research. If you're willing to spend fifty to a hundred thousand dollars, we can do that. But for ten thousand dollars, us, just a structure for ten thousand dollars, you won't even have a transfer station where a handicapped child can use it. We're, we're getting almost a forty thousand dollar piece of equipment for fourteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars that a handicapped child will be able to use.
Well, this is kinda Mr. Lee's baby too, so I'd like to hear from him before we go any further. Would you mind coming up, Mr. Lee? I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but I know your, your heart is dear to this.
Lane Lee, fifty-seven thirteen Berlin Drive. I don't think this thing's on.
It's not on?
I didn't.
Tap the top.
Didn't sound like it's amplified to me.
Tap the top some, because I don't think they can hear you. Just tap it, see if it's on. Yeah, pick it up. It's all, yeah, you're on. Pull it out of there. There you go, Frank.
The original design and request or, uh, dream was for a universally and, uh, accessible play area. This, this play area, this, uh, been proposed is probably, is ADA approved, I'm sure, but it's probably accessible only by either someone that has, you know, walking, uh, ability with, uh, you know, crutches or something like that. There, from what I can see, you could not put a wheelchair anywhere, you know, in this structure. It has steps. Wheels, their wheelchair cannot go up steps. The structure we have there now is, is accessible as what you wanna buy. Why buy something that you already have? And that wasn't the dream of the late, uh, Ms. Coolidge. She, like, uh, Mr. Rowe said, she had this thing financed where it wouldn't have cost the city anything. Now, you're talk, I don't know, don't know what kind of a wheelchair swing you're talking about. But the only one that I know of that's approved is one where you have to take the child out of the wheelchair and put them in.
No, sir.
The swing.
No, sir.
The only other ones I've seen were a platform that you roll the wheelchair onto and then it's locked in place.
Correct.
And everything that I've read and come up with is, nobody recommends that because it turns out to be a battering ram that injures other people more than anything else. And most places, uh, that I, when I was working on this a while back, they don't even sell it anymore, that kind of a, uh, swing. Just for that reason, because it was a safety hazard. I don't know what else you want.
Thank you.
Uh, any other questions? I, I don't know a thing about handicaps, so, uh, nah.
Chris, can I have one more?
Is there anything that would?
I just wanna let everyone know as well. We spent a lot of time doing research on this. A lot of companies don't even sell this equipment for liability reasons. Just letting you know. It, it, it took a lot of research to find what we did at the cost savings that we managed to find it. How, how does the transfer station bring the wheelchair into play?
It doesn't, it doesn't.
Okay, it's just a, it's just a set of ramps then?
That's correct. It's, the wheelchair pulls up beside it and the child gets out of the wheelchair and gets on to the, the, uh, uh, president, uh, uh, buddy swings it that way. Uh, this, this set does not include a swing set, but it is ADA accessible. It is certified ADA accessible. I have a copy of the ADA rule and I'm looking at it and I'm telling you, it is accessible. It is not according to the wishes and it is not a swing, but it will suffice.
And it's in keeping with the funds that we have?
Yes, it is. Uh, and fairly inexpensive.
And the second grant will purchase the swing that is ADA and one is a wheelchair. One, and one that you take the child out of the wheelchair and place in as well.
It's two, actually.
It's two.
So, at that point, we would be good with, you, you seem to have more experience. I don't.
Well, if you're gonna put a swing in, yes, that's the way to go, but I, I wouldn't recommend a, a platform that you roll a wheelchair onto with the child in it.
Is that what we have?
They make.
They're only two types.
They make plastic or formed seats that the caretaker has to remove the child.
That's correct.
From the wheelchair and put them in the formed seat and they're harnessed in. And they make two different sizes of those.
So, the mother or father would do?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Right.
And, and that, from what I, what I understand, if you do put a chair like that in, you have to put two in, one of each size.
That's correct.
In the same area, then there's a post, and then on the other side of that, you could put regular swings.
Okay, now, but both of them require the?
Yes, sir.
May I address Mr. Lee?
Uh, the child be taken out of it and put it in the swing is?
Yes, that's, that's the one we're looking at. We're not looking at the battering ram because we discovered that quite early on also. It, it is, it is an issue and, and those are being phased out. So, it is the molded type that must, the child again, must be taken out of the wheelchair and put into the swing. And that's really what, all that's available now.
Terry, I'm gonna go to you with this. You seem to have more of a idea of what we wanted. And, uh, Chris is getting red-faced, so he did a lot of work on this.
He must be part Irish. Well, unfortunately, some years have gone by since Christine has passed and maybe, and I could see litigation could ruin a lot of things for a lot of people and this may have been one of those casualties. I just wanna make sure that if we're gonna do this, and I, and I was under the impression that we were going to dedicate this to her, that we get as close to what she was going to implement as we can. And it looks like that's as close as we're gonna get. Cause I know she had talked about equipment that was going to work with the wheelchairs and everything else, and that was her dream. So, if this is the best we can do, then this is the best we can do.
So, moves?
Is the fifty-fifty grant?
Uh, no, no, no. It's fifty thousand, uh, it's, it's fifty thousand and fifty thousand.
Okay, so it's straight up money?
Straight up money.
Oh, make a motion to approve the, uh, purchase of playground equipment?
Second.
Have a motion to say it.
That's it.
That's it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item number four.
I think we did the best we could, so what can we say?
Item number four, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, we're at four. There we go.
Item number four, agenda item, police department impound vehicles to be declared as surplus for auction. Staff recommends the following motion. Motion to approve the list of impounded vehicles to be declared as surplus and offered for sale at Tampa Machinery Auction. Chief of County stands prepared to answer any questions you might have.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. You're not getting out of it, though. Um, all of these cars are transferred to Tampa, put on auction, correct? The week put forth a bill for however long we've kept them back here?
Yeah, we, we've been breaking even, making a little bit of money on the vehicles. So it's not, we're not at a negative on any of these vehicles at all.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
We did.
Motion in a second. I'm gonna just throw in, we need to figure out a better way to do this, and I want the next homer. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That is it, unless Mrs. Sorrell has?
No, I don't have anything for all business tonight. Thank you.
Okay. I think we're out of your purview.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll be happy to talk, talk to you out there, though.